Sun shining forth on a cloudless morning, like rain that makes grass to sprout from the earth. Lord guide this meeting, be with our leaders. Bless the people that live in this wonderful city. As we enter the season of Thanksgiving, I just thank you for all the city employees and their dedication to their work, especially those who will be recognized tonight. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Thank you. All right, it is seven o'clock, so I am going to call our Tuesday, November 19th Common Council meeting to order. Megan, would you please take the role? Davis?
Here.
Board?
Here.
Barts? Blanky? Smith?
Here.
Schmidt? Wetzel? Mildenhauer? Very good. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item on our agenda is the minutes of the council meeting from November 4th. Any comments or questions on those minutes? All right, very good. Next is comments and suggestions from citizens present. Megan, you have any there? Okay, anyone remotely that would like to comment? All right, let's move on then to reports. You have the Senior Center Advisory Board minutes from October 15th, Park, Rec and Forestry from October 21st, Plan Commission from October 28th, and Licensing from September 11th. Anybody have any comments or questions on any of those minutes? All right then, moving right along, let's go to Communications and Recommendations. Our first item this evening is Employee Recognitions. I'm going to invite up Stacy, oh, there you are, like a mister. I'm going to invite up Stacy. Stacy is going to honor two of our Public Works Street Division team members. And before she does, I do want to also acknowledge Ben Miller, celebrating 10 years with the Police Department. So Stacy, I'm going to invite you up, and the first person we get to recognize this evening from Public Works, Street and Solid Waste Division is Wayne Boyd, for 25 years of service. So Wayne, please come up.
Twenty-five years, it's truly an accomplishment. Wayne is a quiet person, comes to work every day, and always does whatever is needed. He is usually all business, but one of my favorite things about Wayne is his sheepish, sheepish shoulder shrugging laugh when you crack him up. Wayne has seen many changes in this division. He has picked up curbside solid waste and recycling by hand with rear loaders for over half of his career, as well as separating recycling by hand into a truck while on the route. When the City of Watertown changed their collection to automated, Wayne was instrumental in the changeover, learning to drive a different truck and carefully lifting carts with an automated arm. Change is never easy, but Wayne adapted well and always with a positive attitude. He now is the person known for doing the routes in the most efficient way, and other team members strive to do them like Wayne. For about 23 years of Wayne's career, he has worked every holiday. Changing our process to allow all employees to be off on our holidays and not do collection came with great resistance. Wayne spoke up and stated how happy his wife Debbie was to finally have him home all day on the holidays. It really made me realize the sacrifices he and that crew made all those years. I am honored to have Wayne on our team. Congratulations on your 25 years with the City of Watertown.
Our next person that we're acknowledging with also 25 years at Public Works, Street and Solid Waste Division is Randy Crowsey. Come on up, Randy.
Twenty-five years, also truly an accomplishment. Randy is a unique personality on our team, grumbling and making noises around the shop to see what kind of reaction he gets from people. It has somewhat become the Crowsey trait. Randy is a heavy equipment operator for our division. In most recent years, he has been the operator for catch base and repairs, curb and sidewalk replacements, and culvert installation and repairs. Randy led our crew in the learning process of installing permeable pavers that you see around town, which was brand new to us. Randy has a desire and expectation of doing things right the first time, and because of this, Watertown has gotten numerous compliments from outside contractors and individuals about the way we perform this work and the quality of it. Randy is here for all of our snow operations, where he does assaulting in the South Highway 26 area, and has a loader route in cul-de-sacs and parking lots when we plow. He is a gifted welder, saving the city thousands of dollars with his fabrication work in our maintenance shop. Randy is a man of many talents, and we are so fortunate to have him on our team. Congratulations on your 25 years.
I am always so impressed when we have people that have worked for the city longer than I've been able to work. And it's really inspiring to me. You all have heard me say that before, but I don't know that Wayne or Randy have the amount of just historical and institutional knowledge that lives in a lot of people at Street and Solid Waste, but in particular, a few sitting in this room is something that you can't put a dollar value on. And I hope I will not be in this position when they choose to no longer work for us, meaning I hope they work for us for a very long time, so that I don't have to figure out how we replace what's inside of all of their knowledge and their abilities. It's just tremendous. And the last thing I'll say is, the variety of skill set is not something that lives very often in my generation or the ones after me. And so I think where we get a lot of unique skills and trades and talents, those aren't easily replaceable anymore. So we're just really grateful that you all continue to serve our city and to continue to really evolve as our operations evolve. I never really stopped to think about it until you say, in these, sometimes this single, the sorting recycling, like, it's mind-boggling that we did that. I remember doing it, but to now just have the amount of stormwater work they do, I mean, it's just constantly changing, and I'm just so grateful that we have people that are nimble enough to be able to take that on. So it's been an honor to work alongside each and every one of you, and, well, not alongside, but from afar. To be able to say that you're on our team, it's really incredible, and it's not something that I think we're going to see forever. So I'm glad you all are here, and I hope you continue to be here for many more years. So, thank you all. Thanks for coming. You're welcome to stay for meetings, but most people don't hang out. So don't feel weird if you get up, none of us will pass judgment. All right, after Employee Recognitions, our next item is the Watertown Fire Department Monthly Report for September. Does anyone have any questions for the chief? Yes, sir.
One, one stat that jumped out to me is the September fire saved versus lost. And year-over-year, from '23 to '24, it's a pretty drastic improvement on that from, just a percentage-wise, looking at 599,000 saved to 1,000 lost versus last year was 144,000 saved to 132,000 lost. And then just overall, year-over-year, it seems as though the numbers show a lot more property being saved through the Fire Department. I'm wondering if there's a change in procedure, or something's been done. What accounts for that huge improvement on that statistic?
With my six months that I've been here, I'm not exactly certain on that, however, but it could be something as simple as one major fire that makes such a significant difference in the number. So it could have been a house fire or two, a total loss on a house, rather than just a room and contents fire. And that's just a snapshot of the monthly report, too. So, but thank you. We are making efforts internally and with our inspection process to help keep that trend going.
Any other questions or comments for the chief?
Can we, could we add one thing that I think is going to be important today and into the future, and that's response times?
Yes, our records management system that we're re-implementing or getting in January is going to be able to better track all of our times, and I'll be sure to add that in the future.
Be helpful.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Anybody else? Very good. Thanks, chief. All right, next item is the Accounts Payable. Anybody have any questions or comments on the accounts? All right, and next is Miss Laney's Business. You have the Payroll Summary from October 16th to 29th, and Cash and Investments from October 31st. Questions or comments on any of those? All right, let's move to Licenses. The first item is just an FYI in your packet, that is, the Licensing Memo from the clerk. Item B is to review and take action on an application for a Class A malt and liquor license for Watertown Liquor Depot. Hayden Heisel is the agent. This is located at 1907 Market Way, Suite C. Yes?
I'd move for approval of this Class A malt and liquor license, conditioned on the passing of the inspections required from the Police and Fire Department.
Very good. Motion by Mr. Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blanky. Questions or comments from anyone? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Awesome. Next is to review and take action on an application for a temporary Class B wine license. This is from St. Jude Academy at the Watertown Moravian Church at 510 South Cole Street. This is for the St. Jude Academy Benefit Event on Friday, December 6th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Is there a motion? Yes.
I'd move for the approval of the temporary Class B wine license without conditions.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blanky. Just for awareness, I checked in with the clerk before the meeting, and that condition has been satisfied. That's why it's without conditions tonight. Any other comments or questions on this one? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, very good. Last then is to review and take action on an application for an operator license for Jessica Rats. Sir?
I would move for the denial of this application for operator's license.
Motion to deny by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Barts. Any questions or comments? All in favor of the denial, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, very good. Next is Ordinances. So let's go first to ordinance 24-27. This is an ordinance for third-party inspections. This is here from Ms. Davis and Public Safety and Welfare on its second reading. Ms. Davis?
I move to approve this ordinance.
Motion by Ms. Davis.
I second that, but is this 24-27 or 24-26?
I have 24. Are you seconding, though?
Yeah.
Okay, so a motion by Ms. Davis, a second by Mr. Board. Comments or questions on this one? Megan? Davis? Lampy? Board? Barts? Blanky? Smith?
Aye.
Schmidt? Wetzel? Motion passed eight to zero. Thank you. Next is ordinance 24-28. This is to amend Chapter 550 of our zoning code through amendments to language and sections. 550-109B, 109D, 132, 56C, 32B, Prent 2, 33B, Prent 2, 34B, Prent 2, N120C. This is here from me and the Planning Commission on its second reading. Mr. Smith?
I move for approval of proposed ordinance 24-28.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Second by Mr. Wetzel. Discussion from anyone? Megan? Smith? Schmidt? Wetzel? Davis? Lampy? Board?
Aye.
Barts? Blanky? Motion passed eight to zero. Thank you. Next is ordinance 24-30. This is to adopt Chapter 550 of our official zoning map for the City of Watertown and to rezone 1911 Gateway Drive from mixed zoning to MR10. This is here from me and the Plan Commission on its first reading. Thank you, Mr. Wetzel. Second by Mr. Barts. Any questions or comments? Megan? Wetzel?
Aye.
Davis? Lampy? Board?
Aye.
Barts? Blanky? Smith? Schmidt? Motion passed eight to zero. Thank you. Next then is ordinance 24-31. This is to adopt Chapter 550 of the official zoning map of the City of Watertown. This is here from me and the Plan Commission on its first reading.
Move for 24-31.
Thank you, Mr. Blanky. Second by Mr. Barts. Excuse me, Mr. Board. As soon as it came out, I knew it was wrong. I'm so sorry. It's harder than you think. Your name tag is in front of Mr. Lampy, for goodness sake. It's so hard.
But it belongs there.
You know, I'm just giving it at this point. I'm going to screw it up like once a month. Okay, that was actually a second by Mr. Board, despite my inability to correctly articulate names. Does anyone have any questions or comments on this one? Megan? Blanky? Smith? Schmidt? Wetzel? Davis? Lampy? Board? Barts? Motion passed eight to zero. Thank you. Next is ordinance 24-32. This is to adopt amendments to our City of Watertown 2019 Comprehensive Plan. This is here from me and the Planning Commission, again, on its first reading.
I'll move for 24-32.
Thank you, Mr. Blanky. And a second by Mr. Barts. Comments, questions? Megan? Blanky? Smith?
Aye.
Schmidt? Wetzel? Davis? Lampy? Board? Barts? Motion passed eight to zero. Thank you. Let's move to Resolutions. The first is Exhibit 9675. This is a resolution to approve the 2025 budget for Funds 1 and 4. This is here from me and the Finance Committee. Mr. Lampy?
I would move to approve 9675.
Thank you, sir. Second by Ms. Davis. Comments or questions? Yes?
Just wanted to double-check, since the budget available online is the 1014 addition, that the current budget we're about to pass has those, that last amendment that was made in November.
Okay.
Thank you.
Others? Mr. Smith?
Well, I think that budget time is always a difficult time, and the potential for the increasingly hard-pressed financial status of communities all across our state comes to bear, and communities try to make the most out of difficult circumstances. That is invariably the case. Sometimes the results are controversial, other times they are approved, but not necessarily as well-received in the community as we might otherwise hope. But in this particular instance, and for this year, I think that this is an extraordinarily commendable effort by our mayor and by the hard-working members of the Finance Committee. To have a general budget that has a zero increase in the tax levy requirement is truly extraordinary. And it's not because this was a particularly easy year. It was because there was a resolve that the outcome would be to this degree of diligence, and that the taxpayers of our community can be very thankful for the hard work that was put in. And while that commendation for those at the end of this budget process is very much deserved, I also want to congratulate the department heads who submitted department budgets that were in line with the specifications set forth by the mayor, and the hard work that went into presenting this to the Finance Committee by the mayor. So I haven't had the opportunity to be part of that process, but for those who were, this was an outstanding effort. I thank you, and I think the citizens of our community have every reason to be equally thankful for an outstanding performance.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Megan? Lampy? Board? Barts? Blanky? Smith? Schmidt? Wetzel? Davis? Motion passed eight to zero. Very good. Thank you all. Next then, also with the budget, is Exhibit 9676. This is the resolution to approve the 2025 budget for all funds other than Fund 1 and Fund 4, again, from me and the Finance Committee. Ms. Davis?
Exhibit 9676.
Thank you, ma'am. Second by Mr. Barts. Any questions or comments on this piece? Megan? Davis?
Aye.
Lampy? Board? Barts? Blanky? Smith? Schmidt? Wetzel? Motion passed eight to zero. Very good. Thank you all very much, and thank you also, I'll echo the comments of Mr. Smith. Our city leadership team is pretty amazing. I'm pretty proud to be a part of them, and so grateful for all their hard work. And the hard work of our Finance Committee, a lot of hours go into that process, and I thank you all very much. Next, so equally as exciting, is Exhibit 9677, which is the resolution to enter into a contract for web-based reporting of fire alarms. It is actually important. This is here from me and the Finance Committee.
I'll move for 9677.
Thank you, Mr. Blanky. Second by Mr. Board. Questions or comments? Ms. Davis?
I'm just curious about the title, Web-Based Reporting of Fire Alarms. Is, that's the correct title?
I do not approve the titles. Same concept, though?
Because the memo says third-party online reporting?
I think instead of online, we used web-based, is my hunch. I think...
Okay, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Others? Megan? Blanky?
Aye.
Smith? Schmidt? Wetzel? Davis? Lampy? Board? Barts? Motion passed eight to zero. Thank you. Next is Exhibit 9678. This is an application for the WEM pre-disaster flood resilience grant for assessment of the Brancor Creek system. This is here from me and the Finance Committee.
I'd move to approve 9678.
Motion by Mr. Lampy, second by Mr. Board. Point your guys' attention, this is the memo that's on your desks, in case you didn't get a chance to review it. This grant kind of popped up, and it's due at the end of the month, and so we hustled, we, I did nothing. Andrew Byer and Maureen McRum hustled to get it before the Finance Committee, and we just did that right before this meeting, just for some context. There is a 20% match, I believe she said during that last meeting, which is about $29,000. The match would come out of stormwater, the stormwater budget, should we be successful in our efforts. Yeah?
I appreciate the map and the memo, because after reading the resolution, I went back to the Finance Committee minutes and packet details, and understood the basic area that this was, knowing that it runs along Carriage Hill Drive and that area, but having a map to be able to kind of see the full extent of it, it's far more extensive than what I thought from the description, even in the Finance Committee meeting packet. So I appreciate this. Thank you.
Yes?
I just wanted to make a brief comment. This is definitely appreciated in District 2. A lot of the waterways that are discussed in this grant pass through that area. It's also going to be appreciated by anybody who likes driving west on Highway 19, when there's a lot of water.
I agree. Any other comments or questions on this one? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Very good. All right, next and last resolution is Exhibit 9679. This is to approve a plat of right-of-way for Dewey Avenue Whistock Project. This is here from me and the Plan Commission.
Would you move to approve?
Thank you, sir. Second by Mr. Board. Any questions or comments on this one? Yes?
Well, I know the reason for this resolution is because the width of Dewey Avenue is changing. I was just wondering if maybe Andrew could let us know what is changing from and to, how much wider it's getting?
So the right-of-way width...
So the right-of-way width isn't changing, that's going to remain the same, but the roadway is going to be widened. It'll be, put me on the spot here, I believe it's 32 feet wide back of curb to back of curb, but I can verify after the meeting with you. It is getting widened to accommodate two lanes of traffic and one parking lane. Right now it's a little tight, you have to kind of wait and weave, wait your turn, but it will be widened with this project.
Other questions for Andrew? Or any comments on this one? Thanks, Andrew. Megan? Barts? Blanke?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Davis? Lampy? Board? Motion passed eight to zero.
Very good. We are at the point where we have another opportunity for comments from citizens present, if anyone would like to comment. Sir? Oh, will you turn that, just press that circle. There you go.
Leaning down. Christopher Kopus, 517 North Washington Street. Here, in my limited capacity as the Library Board President, I just wanted to spend a moment expressing my sincere thanks to the Common Council for its generous budget allocation for this fiscal year. I understand, Mr. Smith, that the budget season is tight, and your comments are well-founded, that it's challenging to come up with budgets from year to year, and we sincerely appreciate the trust and the value that the Common Council has placed in the library. So thank you all sincerely.
Thank you, Mr. Kopus. Anyone else that would like to comment? Or anyone remotely that would like to comment? All right, with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Motion by Mr. Blanke, second by Ms. Davis. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned at 7:27. Thanks, everybody.